This program is brought to you by Newsworks in cooperation with the city of Eau Claire. This program is simulcast on WRFPLP 101.9 FM.
There's a pilot policy.
The officers are here now, so we...
Yeah, no. Let's take a look at those instructions. And then once we get done with this, ready to operate. It never ends.
So, we are starting our process of, actually, we're starting the process of developing the 2018 through 2022 capital improvement program. Hannah, kick off meeting with the Division and Department of Evans. And we've started the process of reviewing requests. We haven't completed that process yet at this point. But we wanted to have this initial meeting with the city council to have a higher level policy discussion about the capital improvements program. Similar to how we handled the operating budget last year. We want to get feedback from the city council on really a couple of specific areas. One of them is the priorities that we should be considering when we're evaluating the request for capital funds. And also the financial parameters that we should be operating within. So, we'll go through what our priorities, I guess, were last year on the CIP process. And ask the city council if we would like to make any changes to those priorities. And as we did with the operating budget, we will use those as, I guess, as a lens, if you will, to filter through the capital requests and formulating our recommendations. And then on the financial parameters, the same thing. We've got, I'll just go quickly over four of our financial policies as they relate to the capital budget. Specifically having to do with debt and our fund balance. And see if there's anything related to those financial parameters that the city council would like to add or change. And we'll make those adjustments as we go through the capital program and formulating our recommendations. And you want to add anything?
Good.
Okay.
Let's jump right in.
The priorities that we used in evaluating requests last year were threefold. Resources should be provided for the maintenance of existing infrastructure and facilities and timely replacement of equipment. Again, the philosophy being that we want to take care of those assets that we have before we go out and instruct new assets. We want to take care of what we have. Secondly, resources should be provided for the continued role from our community. A lot of different capital expenditures fall into that category, whether it's roads and streets and sewers, water service, as well as our economic development initiatives. All of those kinds of things can fall into that same category. Lastly, resources should be provided to enhance the sense of place and community. I believe this is actually one of the priorities that the city council added last year to the list. So, those are the priorities that we have at this time. As we go through capital requests, we'll evaluate them against those priorities and determine which to include and which to perhaps not include in the capital program. But are there any priorities that should be added to this list or subtracted from this list? Or is council good with these priorities?
Can I just ask you, priorities like 1, 2, and 3, or are they treated equally?
Treated equally.
Would it be helpful for you to, if we set maintenance first above all else, like stuff like that?
I mean, it certainly, I don't think it would hurt to have that. But the way that, the way I, we've used these in the past is really just going through, generally making sure that the requests fall in line with these priorities. And kind of the, I think the way I've handled, and handled is the more priorities that they tick off, the better, more important that request is.
I think there's still a lot of what's important to, I think, for the city. I wouldn't want to give up any of them. And I'm glad to hear that you weigh requests for a fire station or a pool improvements or a library enhancements against all three of these. Because if you only maintain, then I don't, I think you lose something. And, but if you just grow, that can be unwise, they spent money too. What is growth all that? And I think the third one is the most challenging, but if you have a sense of place, what is Eau Claire? People will have a sense of what it means to live here and all that. For me, works that you weigh every request against all three of them, they're, I would say, equally important.
And I think that the last priority there was really to get at that sense of quality of life. And that those been, those quality of life investments are important to Eau Claire, the sense of community.
I can't imagine a request that wouldn't fall into these, let's see, what would that be?
I don't know, I've seen some pretty wild requests in plenty of years.
Like a...
I'm not going to get into any specifics.
A race car pad or a thing, race car, what's I know, racing thing.
A speedway.
Yeah. But that would be, that's a cultural choice too, so I don't know. What, it doesn't really outrageous request.
And I think it does, again, the more boxes that a request ticks, the help, it does help us start winnowing the down the list. Other comments?
I really appreciate the work here and just even the process for us to have these discussions and that way when we get to the other seasons. So, we all kind of go into it with our eyes a little bit more wide open of each other values. I'm wondering if there would ever be a way that we could look at prioritizing some of the perhaps approaches, whether it's the CIP or making a different way the operation budget, which is, I realize is a different conversation. But to help, be intentional about maybe the areas in our community that are experiencing increased poverty or lower socioeconomic statuses, things along those lines. So, when I see these items, I see that, okay, well, any one of these statements could, I think, apply to anywhere in town versus any strategic directive to say, well, for the next four years, we're really going to focus on this topic. Or for the next four years, we really want to make investments in public transportation and really prioritize our values for, you know, X, Y, or Z. So, I think these are very good things, there's, I don't think there's anything wrong with these. I just wonder when and how could we winnow down to say, we want to be a little bit more aggressive in some of our areas of our community that could use some help or anything else? I don't have an answer at this moment, other to say that I think it's something I think about and put on the table for discussion.
I think certainly this, you know, that would be certainly in line with what we're talking about here right now. If those are the, if that, if those are the priorities of the city council, you want to make investments in certain areas of the community or certain types of investments like public transportation or something, that's the kind of direction that would be very helpful for us.
That's what this meeting is about. So that, if you think of this, that you're setting the walls on a room. And then we will go back and look at all the requests that we have from the different departments and ideas, put the furniture in there and of course bring that back as a plan for you and wish you could move the furniture around as you see fit. But yeah, this is that time that if you, if there is a specific broader priority without getting into specific projects, but if there's certain filters that you want us to be looking at the requests through, this will be the time to go down that direction.
Are you talking about residential neighborhoods or are you talking about commercial areas?
I think I would put it, I'd put it in two perhaps two buckets. So, we need to set a standard and raise and having a community where people are experiencing lower or higher poverty rates. So, one idea could be that we want to, and it's hard to say when we don't have those exact numbers and all that right here for this exact conversation. But I think it would be worth looking at some targeted investments so that we could help elevate neighborhoods that are struggling. I know that's been a goal of ours already, and this is a way that we can put some additional teeth behind that. And then something that's not related to neighborhoods is, in my opinion, would be public transportation. I know that I've been very interested in bus shelters since I probably took my first seat on the council. And it's never been a high priority and maybe it doesn't seem like a big deal. However, when you're trying to carry out your groceries from the store and you don't have a shelter to wait under, that's a challenge. And when the buses are only mode of transportation to feed their family, that's a challenge. And when you have people who can choose whether or not they want to ride the bus and they choose not to because, well, I don't want to sit in the rain, I don't want to sit where it's windy, then we lose the chance for increased ridership. So, if I were to raise my civic wand, I would love to see increased bus shelters. But more than that, I'm interested in seeing, my two cents would be that we use a strategic approach to help improve our public transportation system. And we're going to be doing that with our new transfer center that's going to come online. So there's, we have so much good energy, so how do we make it think to the next level? And to me, I would like to see us do that in conjunction with these very fine priorities that I've been put on the table.
Do you think, Catherine, we could tweak the first bullet a little bit by focusing maintenance on existing infrastructure in LA neighborhoods? By, or by prioritizing maintenance in existing LA neighborhoods?
I think we could tweak that, and I don't know what the right balance is that would be acceptable and the right thing to do by our constituents. Because they wouldn't want to say, well, we should only prioritize this because we have other places in our community that maybe aren't struggling every day and still need to have a continuing incentive to do. So, I don't know what the right response is. So, I would say I would support something like that, and I also don't want to ignore other places that maybe aren't struggling, but so we, yeah.
If I may comment on that, the concept and the idea, you know, of targeting some area and going forward is relevant. You know, and I think we have to take a look at, but the problem we have is we've got to look at the total dollars and what the total needs are. So, once we get the basis of what we're looking at, because what is it, you know, the investment that we want, is what are we going to forego to do that? Because we only have X number of dollars. And those are the things we have to take a look at at the time and say, okay, to build this bus shelter, we're not going to do this at Hogs. I'll just use that as an example, it's not necessary. And so, this is what we have to decide on. And I, you know, the comment of saying, okay, if we want to emphasize and take a look at that, that's fine in those concepts. But we also have to make sure that when we get to it, we say, what are the dollars? Because we've got to be careful in how we expend those dollars. Because we have less dollars available each year and every time we expand that capital budget, all we do is expand our debt. And our debt is starting to get where it's, it's going to be a problem, especially if interest rates go up. Right now, we're, we get away with it a little bit because they're low, but we've got to continue. Because the exact people you're talking about providing the service to, if they're renting and/or ownership, when those taxes go up, it hits them the hardest. So, you know, it's a double edged sword. And so, unless we say, we're going to forego this to do that, we can't just increase the budget to do it.
Given all that, what would invest? Is it better to say we want to invest in old houses or invest by, not geography, by form? We want to prioritize maintenance of older and historic structures? Is that too specific? Or some, or by form, prioritize by dog parks or...
Well, I could give an exact thing that I would put on the table with exact parameters. And I would say a priority of putting bus shelters at every major, near every major grocery store in this community. That if there's not a bus shelter there, that at least that's a priority, that's a place to start.
And I think that'd be an excellent program to get to all of the grocery stores and see if we can get them to help promote it. So we can get the private-public partnership to get some of the, instead of all public dollars going into this, we get private dollars to go with it.
So, I mean, I just want to put a supportive word in. For, I think what Catherine was saying is how do we, we've identified poverty is one thing that we want to address. And how do we use our, whether it's redoing infrastructure, redoing parks, playgrounds, whether it's roads, which we already kind of redo. We look at all the streets and often silver and certain areas. But I think the idea there is, is how do we focus some of these resources? And maybe we do have to make tough choices, like do we, can we replace an ice sheet or can we do the dasher boards another year? Because we're going to, you know, help redo a playground for kids who, whose families are struggling. You know, maybe other choices we should be, we should make it. And I think that's kind of what Catherine was getting at is, and I could support that too, with prioritizing areas of our community that are maybe falling behind a little bit for...
So, along those lines, and you know, thank you for that Andrew, because what I would, it helps with, when I heard Catherine saying, which really from a priority standpoint, then maybe we're prioritizing investments, capital investments that, I guess we could have, you know, seek to alleviate poverty and/or benefit lower moderate income populations of our community. Something along, something along those lines. I think that maybe that kind of dovetails both of the sentiments without getting into specific projects. Because I, I don't, off the top of my head, I don't, we haven't had a transit meeting yet, I don't even know what projects have been proposed by the, you know, by the transit director.
I also like this idea, which I think is what Catherine is saying, are we, are these council members? Yeah. Which is kind of putting a little bit more focus on one area of our city, not necessarily a geographical area, but an area such as transit or something else. This idea of like putting more, putting more priority in that for a couple of years and rising that up. And then kind of while working on some of the more essential projects and then kind of moving on to the next area of our city, geographic or otherwise, to rise up, you know, next step or something.
Well, how long are public playgrounds doing?
We don't have, the, I think they're doing okay. And like, like the streets, they bring those forces to be replaced as they wear out. It's not like we have a geographic area which gets less attention. And the street program is a good example of that. You know, we look at it based upon neighborhood, it's not based upon a particular geographic area that gets attention, it doesn't. If it's a forced re regardless of where it is, you know, it gets recommended to be removed. Same thing with our playgrounds. I mean, the playgrounds, the neighborhood playgrounds are looked at based upon, you know, their condition and receive the resources to be replaced at the time that they wear out. Again, regardless of what neighborhood they're in, if they wear out, we replace them, so.
I was just bringing up examples, infrastructure investment, because that's one of the things that I've heard a lot is that we do put a lot of resources into our downtown, whether it's, you know, trying to encourage investment from the haymarket landing or whatever. We're performing outside, those are priorities. We've made, and I think other council members joining and saying we've made it a priority. But I do hear, well, what, you know, can we put more investment in areas that are surrounding our downtown? And can we make that more of a focus? And I think that it is said, it is said that, you know, when you kind of invest in areas and you make them nicer for folks, that helps, I think that helps everything. You know, people feel like, okay, this community's carries and where. And that's why one of the things, the West Bank, the Tanner district is so exciting, because that's also looking at trying to bring more investment to an area that really needs it. So, I guess I'm just going to, I didn't need to bring up specific projects. And I thank you that the playgrounds are, I haven't really played on the playgrounds very much. But I'm just trying to give an idea of, you know, what council members and you all are saying, which is how we focus our dollars in those areas of our community.
I think the street program is certainly a totally equal opportunity program. And I think from my conversations with the city engineer sitting right back there, he does pay maybe a bit more attention to the older neighborhoods than you might expect from the city engineer.
It's certainly the alley.
I was going to add, sure that that alley program continues to be very robust because that, that's, that is an automatic focus into the older neighborhoods. And thus, to the most right, then the poorer neighborhoods as well.
And the sidewalks in terms of, you know, making sure that the older neighborhoods, as you may have the older sidewalks, are getting the attention and, you know.
But that does bring up something, and I don't suppose it's a CIP thing, but you can put it under, under yellow color, but we're going to, we're going to focus on infrastructure improvements in the really poor areas. We're battling that assessment. Because people just can't, we heard that this year, some people just simply can't afford it. And so, I think that's something we need to, maybe, I think you already just got right, you did that.
But that does, it does become part of the, or could become part of the capital program, because if we're not assessing for some of those improvements, they need to get rolled into the capital program and paid for.
But that would be a way to adjust some power issues if we could.
Well, obviously, everything we decide comes down to budget. But is this a, as a discussion that we should be having when we are conducting our most strategic planning? I mean, if we're changing our strategy, if we're changing our priorities in terms of what we're doing as a city, it obviously is going to be impacting the budget. But that's not why we're sitting here, really. We're here to talk about the capital improvement project. No one denying the need that's out there. I mean, our president talked about the level of poverty in our state of the city address. And it's an issue that we, that the city, it's, it's an inhibitor to the growth of our community. And it very well needs to be addressed. I don't know, the capital improvement budget is the place to start, but it is an issue that needs to be addressed.
If we reassess less on the basis of income or something, then it was just said that we have to come up with this budget. So, it could be a priority to spend more capital funds on street projects.
But if that, if that becomes part of our strategic priority, we need to plan for that. We can't say, oh, we're going to do that for the capital improvement project.
For this, you're right, Catherine. But they are going to create a new path.
And, you know, along those lines, what I hear you saying, Mitchell, was to take a look at our assessment policy. That, you know, that would be where we could start.
And we invest assessment policy.
And then, and then, you know, that may end up, if, you know, we took that action in 2017, you know, we might have to, it might not go into effect for a period of time until we can budget accordingly within the capital budget to do that.
Within the CIP, we can, if we have a bucket of money, we can move things, move projects, make choices about projects within, in a budget neutral way, such that, here's our CIP. We can make choices within that bucket of what we decide is important that year or maybe for a couple of years.
Or future years, perfectly, absolutely.
These assessments would be a little big.
Discussion.
Well, we could look at a whole new system, not during special assessments, having a whole city, making the whole, and that's another model. So, it takes a...
Which, yeah, which, you know, of course, if we have that discussion, you know, it's essentially a shared approach, you know, with the citizens about that property, which allows us to do a lot more streets, you know, and with our constraints of... But that does a fair, you know, discussion to have. An observation or comment, keep in mind that ultimately we have a responsibility to bring over CIP, you know, to review and to come and to, and to ultimately pass. And this discussion tonight, although it might feel a little awkward and uncomfortable, is relatively new, you know, in the process. And it is, it's just, it's an opportunity for you to give us some thoughts and feedback, as we will then be bringing forward a recommended, you know, CIP. So, even if you don't come down with a specific change, you know, today in these higher level policies, I mean, we're, we're listening to the conversation and that goes into our thought process and into what we bring back. So, I guess I would encourage you not to be frustrated if you can't come up with the exact words or a specific change. It's a conversation, you know, for us to hear your thoughts, your perspectives, your priorities, again, at that higher level. And give us some guidance as we, you know, as we go in to prepare this specific CIP, which we'll be coming back. And as Carrie mentioned, you have the total flexibility to move, you know, move things around within, within that room, you know, and the furniture that we'll recommend putting in. You can take things out, put it in, or, you know, move the furniture around within the room when we bring back that recommended CIP. when we bring back that recommended CIP.
I have a lot of, I know the guy before, like, a little survey, and have people's kind of checking what they want to see happen each year. Some of that is kind of, I look at, well, some of that, yes. It's kind of nice to see what, what, what do you want this year to happen.
Yeah, what was that called?
Oh, that, yeah, that.
The prior conversations for every.
So, well, that, that was a prioritization exercise from the community with a theoretical, and that was more of a budget, it wasn't a CIP, but it was from a budget perspective. You know, if you had a thousand dollars, you know, how would, how would you spend it? So it, it, it was a community exercise to give you a sense of, you know, in terms of bigger buckets, protective service versus parks versus, you know, different things. You know, how would you prioritize those?
I have a question about what could be considered CIP dollars. Is it ever feasible to do planning, like have a study with CIP dollars? Or does it always have to be stuff?
In, in, in my opinion, if the, if the planning, if, if the money that's being spent on planning is gonna lead to some, some infrastructure, then it's appropriate, it's appropriate to do that as, as, as one project. If it's just, you know, to do, to do planning, then it, it generally is not appropriate because, because then it's really not, really not a capital expense, there's no asset. At the end of, at the end of the process, there's no asset to be, be capitalized.
If I may, maybe I can riff off of what council member from Cameron said. The point is well taken of, if I could paraphrase, not being willy nilly and being intentional about, here's, we've had a plan, we're discussing it, and now we're gonna apply our plan for X amount of years going forward. Kind of going back to this transportation thing, one thing I have been interested in is how do we intentionally make more of a, increase ridership and try to capture more riders in our public transportation program? And I, I went back and reviewed some of the transit kind of charges, their plan, and to my, to the best of my knowledge, there isn't a plan on how do we aggressively try to look at that? And so I think one of the big challenges for our public transportation is that we've kind of been put in a box of, we only get limited dollars for our transportation, and then we are not really attracting the ridership. And so we just kind of hobble along as best as we can. I think we are doing the very best that we can with what we have. So if there was ever an interest to use CIP dollars and for really planning out how do we attract more of a diverse ridership on our public transportation, what would that look like? And do we, do we need the shelters? Do we need different types of amenities on the buses? I mean, lots of stuff I wouldn't even know how to begin to name, but... So I put that on the, on the table for discussion of maybe we can use this, this conversation as a way to say, let's certainly be more intentional on how are we going to attract increased ridership?
Do we have to vote on that adding that priority?
No.
Okay.
We're, we're listening.
I, just going off of that, I think we did have a study a few years ago, maybe three or four years ago, with the transit manager from Illinois, I believe, do you remember that council president? Who looked at how to increase our, I think we had a strategic pla, no, it wasn't Mr. Bronco. It was under Mr. Bronco, yeah. But how to increase our ridership. I just remember because he was from the place where I went to school and originally went to school and we connected. But I kind of remember there was, there was a plan for increasing ridership at that point, I'm not mistaken.
And that's certainly something that, you know, that we can take a look at from an operational side of things.
Yeah.
Okay, let's move on now. I have a little bit of discussion about what the council member, um, hidden mentioned earlier having to do with finances and our financial policies. Leave it to an accountant to go to that. So we have really four different financial policies that relate to our capital program and to some extent provide limitations upon what we're able to fund through our capital program. The first of those has to do with our, the total amount of general obligation debt that we issue as a, as a city. The state of Wisconsin establishes a, a maximum debt that any municipality can issue at five percent of the equalized value of the city. As many of you will recall, a couple of years ago, the city council adopted a, a policy which established our maximum amount of general obligation debt to seventy percent of the state maximum, which equals three percent of our equalized value. So the graph on the screen and your, three and a half percent, sorry. The graph on your screen, on the screen and on your, on your handouts, the blue line here represents the statutory maximum. The red line here represents the maximum debt under the city council's policy. And the green line here represents our, the amount of debt we had from two thousand and seven through two thousand and sixteen. So you can see that, you know, our, our debt as a, as a percentage of the maximum has increased slightly. These lines aren't perfectly parallel, but we're still quite a ways below the, both the statutory as well as the maximum established by the, by the city council. The second policy that affects our, our, our debt is another council policy that indicates that our net, net direct debt should not exceed three times our operating revenues. So the blue line in this graph represents three times our operating revenues. And the red line here represents our net direct debt. And as you, as you can see, these lines really, to a large extent, are running parallel to each other. So our, our net direct debt related to our operating revenues really, really, that gap really isn't closing much. This really isn't a, a measure that's of particular concern to us at this time. A third financial policy, and probably the one that, at this point, is the most limiting for us, is that our tax levy for debt service should not exceed twenty-five percent of our total property tax levy. The blue line here represents our, represents twenty-five percent of our total property tax levy. And the red line here represents our tax levy for debt service. As you can see, the gap in two thousand and seven was greater than the gap in two thousand and seventeen. So though these lines, or the red line, is starting to move closer to the maximum. And, you know, that is something that we continue to, continue to monitor as we put together capital, the capital program for the, for the city council.
So we pretty much, the last graph, are we pretty much at a tug?
Pardon?
At the last one? It's like, yeah, from a.
Yeah, they're getting, they're getting closer together. It hasn't, we haven't, we haven't maxed out yet, but it's getting, we're getting closer to that, to the maximum under, under council policy. Then the last, the last graph relates to our fund balance. And the city council's policy governing fund balance indicates that a minimum of fifteen percent of the ensuing general fund expenditures should be in the unassigned fund balance. And that funds in excess of fifteen percent may be used for capital expenditures. So on an annual basis, we use generally somewhere between two and a half to three million dollars of fund balance to, to pay for capital expenditure on a pay-as-you-go basis, which also reduces the amount of debt that we need to issue to pay for those improvements. So the, this graph is a little bit busy, but the, the blue line here represents twenty percent of the ensuing year's general fund expenditures. The red line here represents fifteen percent. Actually, the way the policy reads is we want to try to keep our unassigned fund balance really between fifteen and twenty percent of the next year's general fund expenditures. The green line here represents our actual fund balance in each of those years. The little black dash line is just a trend line to kind of smooth out what's happening with our fund balance over that period of time. The purple line here represents the amount of fund balance that we expected to use when we adopted the budget. So one of the things that you've heard me say before is that, and this is a question of, of just completing our fund balance, is the way we, the way we don't deplete it, the, the way we continue to, to maintain our fund balance is by having good budget performance in our operating budget. So if we spend less than we expect to spend in our operating budget, or we realize more revenue than we expected to realize, those amounts will back into our fund balance. What this graph is showing you is that, is that not only haven't we drawn down our fund balance, but our fund balance since two thousand and twelve has actually increased. So even though we expected to use or draw down our fund balance between some, somewhere between two and a half and three million dollars, not only haven't we done that, but we've put more money back into our fund balance. The only year, the only year we drew down fund balance substantially was between two thousand and eleven and two thousand and twelve. And then we kind of reset and started growing the fund balance, started growing our fund balance again. So, but this is something that we continue to monitor. This is something we work with our division, department heads on every year with operating budgets that, that we need, we need to be frugal on the operating side. Will we have bad years on the operating side where perhaps we have a lot of snowstorms or something else? And, and, and we do draw down fund balance? Yeah, we will have those years, I'll tell you that. But, but this is a, a constant source of reinforcement of division and department heads that we need these types of, we need these types of returns from our operating budget to continue to fund our capital program without completing our fund balance. So those are the four, the four financial policies. I guess that's, you know, from a financial standpoint, that forms the box that, that we would operate in, 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 in preparing the, the CIP for you. I would expect that through the, through the five years of the capital program, it will comply with these policies.
Does this mean that we have that, we have an extra roughly six million that could go? Because it says fifteen percent, things above fifteen percent could go through capital expenditures. So that means we have some wiggle room to do things if we want to.
Yes. Well, over the quarter, remember, we're gonna be putting together a five-year CIP. So we're gonna be looking up, we're gonna be looking at five years. And, you know, if, if, if we run out and spend all this money in year one, we have nothing left for years two through, two through five of the CIP. So it's, you know.
But this is a good sign for, for us because we are sharply increasing.
The fact that our fund balance continues to grow is a good sign. It absolutely, it absolutely is. So like I said, these are the four, these are the four walls that we, that we operate in. We will bring you a CIP that complies with these policies for all five years of that CIP. The question we have for the city council is, would you like to provide some other direction to us as it relates to these financial policies? Or if we bring you a CIP that complies through all five years with these policies, at least from that standpoint, is that gonna be something that the city council is, is gonna find acceptable?
The, the one thing that I would object to, object to consider is even though we have a debt policy of saying that percentage, if the trend line between the blue and the red line continues to bump up or to tighten, I would not be happy with that. Because what we've been seeing in, in apparently the last couple of years, our budget, our actual expenditures, the budgeted expenditures, we've been doing very well. And part of that has been weather-wise and some other factors. And those worms could turn the other way. And so the, you're, the standards we have here, what we don't want to see is the continuing tightening between those two, even though we're, we're underneath, unless, and, and that's where the unless comes in, unless there is a specific strategic item that we need the budget for to accomplish something that would give us significant future benefit.
So in other words, you, you, would you would agree to continue to spend two and a half to three million from the fund balance, but maybe reduce the entire capital budget some?
No, what I'm saying is, is that we can spend the two and a half from the capital budget as long as operations is generating the two and a half to spend. If it's, if that, in other words, if we say we're gonna spend two and a half of the fund balance, and now from operations, our excess is only a million, that means fund balance is tightening by a million and a half, our lives. And that's what I'm saying is we've got to be careful of so that as we go out into the future, if we get hit with something harder, we've got to, because as soon as you deplete your fund balance, you're gonna, the factors that you're gonna get hit with is higher interest rates. We're gonna get hit with those anyhow because as they continue to raise the interest rates. But then, if our, we don't have the fund balance and the financial equity, the bond rating companies are gonna stop lowering our rating. And the, when we sell bonds, instead of selling them at the ideal level, we're gonna be selling them a little bit higher, and that's gonna cause us more of a crunch.
That, that, the exact thing was the purpose for establishing the policy and establishing a range to stay, to stay within. And that's what, and you're absolutely correct, that's what, you know, bond rating, rating agencies are gonna look at that, at that range.
But if they see that in tight doing this, even though we stay below our number, they're gonna start becoming skeptical.
They, they, they may or they may not. Because my conversations with rating agencies have, you know, historically been they're, they're generally okay with capital expenditures, you know, as long as you're, in particulars, as long as you're using those dollars to maintain your assets. Because what they don't want to see is you not spending any money and letting all your assets deteriorate. So there is a, there is a, there is a, there's a bit of a balance, a bit of a dance.
I thought, I thought you were looking at the, the current policy where the two lines are getting closer, and the levy for debt service shall not exceed twenty-five percent at all. And you're saying there that holding, holding the fund balance amount steady, that you should, that the whole capital budget should perhaps be less efficient? So if they stop that trend?
It's potentially, what you're saying is correct. It could more mean that we have to pull the whole capital budget down because if those lines keep tightening, eventually, they're gonna match.
Right.
And then we've got a problem.
And we don't want to spend more than one year.
So I think this is, this is the chart that council member Mitchell was, was, was referencing. So if, you know, if, if the goal, you know, I guess what, what I need, what I need help with is, is, you know, the, the policy right now is, is twenty-five percent. I guess what I need help with is, you know, the policy right now is 25%.
Right.
Okay, so the policy is right here. If we want... if the council wants something less than that, then we need to know that. Because, you know, again, when I'm putting together a five-year plan, this line may be getting pretty close to that line. It's not going to go over it, I'm going to tell you that, because we won't let it go over it, but it may be getting pretty close to that. The other thing that happens is that, you know, when we're making these projections, they are exactly that, it's a plan, and they're projections. Every single year, we redo this CIP, as you know. So every single year, we kind of reset, reset, reset. So we have lots of opportunities to make sure that, you know, if we start getting close here, that we start leveling that trend out. But, you know, if there's a goal to, you know, say that, you know, in year five, we don't want to exceed, you know, 23% or 24%, then that's the kind of guidance that would be very helpful for me in putting this together.
I have an impression of what you're saying, but I'm not certain of. Are we increasing our debt?
And is that bad?
To stay consistent with that, or, I mean, you're going to maximize our debt, just stay under 25% of our levy? Or are we increasing our debt for a specific purpose in terms of, this is what we need to do to achieve our goal with street projects, or this infrastructure, or that bridge, or whatever? I... it just sounds as though we're motivated by, how close can we get to 25% of our levy? And still stay?
No, that's not what I'm... I'm glad you asked the question, because that's not what I'm saying at all. What I can tell you right now, and we haven't even been through all the projects, is that in order to stay underneath 25%, there are probably going to be many worthwhile projects that aren't going to make the cut. Because, you know, we've got a very aggressive street program, we've got a number of projects within our CIP that are very worthwhile projects. I mean, we went through this last, you know, last year, we had this same discussion, and that came to... but there's no projects in here that the council wanted to eliminate, and that oftentimes is where we end up being as well. But it's our job to provide you a CIP within your parameters. So I'm, you know, we're going to get up, you know, probably pretty close to that in year five.
So what I was trying to get at is, I understand the concept, but to spend up to the limit doesn't make sense. If... the only reason you spend up to the limit is if you've got projects that you have to spend up to the limit for. And that's what we'd have to take a look at and say, okay, are the projects merited to continue to see those lines tighten? Because every time you tighten those lines, we cause a tax increase for our seniors. Because the dollars you're borrowing is more, and the interest rates will be going up. So that means that we can pass that on as a tax levy. And that's the point that I'm getting at, is if we're going to try and hold our tax levy as tight as possible, we've got to be conservative in what we spend, and so we take a harder look at our projects. Not just say, okay, I'll approve this project, this project, and this project, because I'm under that percentage. That's not what we should do.
I think you agree with that. That's what Jay just said.
But what I don't understand is sometimes it's going to make sense when an interest rate is as low... like, say, I rebought an interest rate of, I don't know, like, 4% or 5% or 6% or something. It could happen, yes.
Oh, yeah, but that's actually not...
That's not possible when we've done it five years ago.
Then it might make sense while it's low to do more projects, because you save money in the long run, because we know we're going to be doing projects. So that's why I'm a little confused about why there's a magic number of 25%. Because sometimes it makes sense to borrow, right?
We had the reasons at the time, which we're stating now, but we wanted to have some guidelines so that we didn't borrow too much. We can change that, we can make it 85%. I'll have different jobs later, but so it can be changed, but I think it's important that we have a goal to look toward, and that we don't borrow too much.
That's right.
I have a question just on this process earlier. Are you suggesting or making a recommendation that we change any of our policies?
No.
Okay. Okay. Then I'm just... we've thought about them, we've vetted them, let's keep it that way, and if you want to make a recommendation that it's not good enough, or we can make it better, then doors open come any time, but I say, I am happy to support these policies as we go forward.
You hit it right on the head. We wanted to make sure that you understood the policies that have been set before, because they're still relevant, you know, in this scheme of things. And Jay, of course, very expertly has the ability to put it in graphic form, which makes it easy, I think, to understand and see, and so we can see trends and be able to identify them. And just touch base with you on those policies, so that one, you know, they're there, what we're looking at historically, and we put our past spending through the lens of those policies, and just double-check to make sure you're comfortable with those, the boundaries at which you still want to be operating in, or plan. Plan is a plan. You're going to plan.
It's been long enough that... Bob and I have sponsored many of these guidelines that we got. My memory is not as crisp as Bob's is, but I don't... it seems to me that the guidelines that we established were somewhat conservative, and in the long run, for the financial health of our community and our bond ratings, et cetera, they were where we wanted them to be. I think what Bob was talking about, what... it doesn't... if we get to 25%, it's not the end of the world. But I don't want to get to the 25% and see those lines diverging in the opposite direction. I mean, the trend is, to me, very important.
That's right.
Right, that's... I agree.
And I think what Jay is saying is that although, you know, this is a five-year plan, you know, last year, because last year is really the first year we took these policies and we put them, you know, in these graphical forms, year five bumped up, you know, to this, and that caused some discussion. I would remind you to jump to Jay's point, that these are plans, they change, there's lots of other things that happen within them. And historically, if we were to look at, probably all of our CIPs had year five looking a little more, you know, out there. But then they change, and we adjust, you know, as we go forward. Again, keeping in mind that we will not bring back a policy that has any year going forward, that any of these are violating any of these policies, and that we're charged to bring back a CIP that's within your parameters.
And the other thing is, yes, it's a five-year projection, but we're only approving one year.
Absolutely.
And therefore, should we have the bad year, so we don't have the amount coming into fund balance, the excess $2.5, we would have to adjust the following year to accommodate that, or we would create a problem.
Right.
And I think that's the point I'm getting at, is looking at these, because the one year is more important than the five year. Five year is a...
It's a plan.
The other four years are wishless.
Yep.
Now, they may be something we need, but they're on the wish. The one year is what we're going to...
And part of your important discussion will be where those things are placed in terms of priority. I mean, not only are they placed in priority because they're on the list or not on the list at all, but it's in what year.
Right.
And so to the extent that you're uncomfortable with the amount that's being spent in year one, you want to push that off, you have to do that. If you want to switch them around, because there's certain projects you want to have earlier versus later, you certainly have that as an option.
And going to Catherine's point, we may have projects that are linked in transit, because that's not a one-year project.
Is there anything else?
No, I don't think so. No, we'll leave that to discuss.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. It was a pleasure.
This program was brought to you by a cooperation between Newsworks and the city of Eau Claire. A transcript of this meeting is available for the hearing impaired. It will be available within seven days of this telecast. Call 715-839-4912, or TDD 715-839-1689, or write Eau Claire City Clerk, PO Box 5148, Eau Claire, Wisconsin 54702-5148. Newsworks is made possible by continuing community support. If you would like to volunteer or make a donation, please contact us via phone at 715-839-5067, or online at valleymediaworks.org.